I sent him a text. Put on your theater voice. I say, let's go. It's after seven, right?
Let's go. So let's get started.
And speak up for Ariel.
So the item is already on the table as it was addressed by this committee before. So any discussion? Randy?
I have some amendments I would like to make, so I don't know procedurally, is that something we should do first? Or discuss the general bill first and then think about amendments?
That would be a question for court counsel. Barbara, did you hear that question?
Can you repeat it, please? Because I only heard the first part.
Yes, so we have the bill in front of us. I have some amendments I would like to make to make it more clear where it fits into our code and to clarify some things. So I'm wondering, should we do amendments first? Or should we talk about the bill first? Does it matter procedurally, as far as you're concerned?
Not as far as I'm concerned. You already have, you know, information from me and advice about how to proceed tonight, but I don't have any other points to make beyond that right now.
And then my other question would be, do we have to have a motion and a second to discuss each of the amendments? Or can we just kind of work on yay? Just turn the fan off. That's what I'm saying, yay. So do we have to have a motion and a second for each of the amendments that I'd like to make or offer?
Are you talking about amendments to? What specifically are you talking about amending? I thought there was just a general discussion of information that had been certain, a model that has been circulated, but not amendments to anything that anyone here had yet proposed.
Well, for instance, I'd like to add the chapter of our code that I think that this would fit into, chapter 332, rental properties. There's a section of legislative findings that I'd like to include, a statement of authority, some things like that. So nothing substantive in terms of the actual tenets of the bill, but some things that help frame it and clarify its relationship to state law.
Okay, so is your question to me just procedurally, whether or not you have to make a motion for each element of those issues? Or whether or not you're able to proceed with your general discussion of how it fits? I believe you proceed with the general discussion of how it fits unless somebody sees, wants to raise some other issue that needs to be handled differently.
Okay, all right. Then shall I go ahead and say what these are? Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
All right, so the first would be a title that's pertinent to our particular city, which would be a local ordinance amending chapter 332 entitled Rental Properties of the Code of the City of Kingston to Prohibit Evictions Without Good Cause.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Would it be an ordinance since this is already chapter 322 or local laws?
Is that, so that's a question, is chapter 332 local law? Or is it, can it be amended via ordinance?
I will look that up and get back to you. I believe it has to be. I'll get back to you with my final answer on that, but I believe that if what you are referring to is 332, that it's going to have to be a like-for-like, is a local law and would have to be replaced as a local law. But again, this is information you're sharing now, so I want to get back to you once you have the proposal and we can talk about it in attorney-client session.
Okay, then section one would simply be clarifying what the title is. So in essence, kind of repeating the title that's at the top. Section two would be legislative findings, intent, and purpose. And this would read something along the lines of renters in the city of Kingston, especially low and moderate income renters, are increasingly faced with the refusal of landlords to continue to rent to otherwise creditworthy tenants and tenants who are otherwise following all applicable laws. Tenants throughout the city have experienced steeply increased rents that threaten the general welfare of our city. We have seen large numbers of our neighbors displaced because they cannot afford increasing rents. The purpose of this law is to protect tenants from exorbitant rent increases that could result in increased timelessness and further displacement within the city. So I don't know, do you want me to go through the whole thing here or discuss each one? What do you all want to do?
I think maybe go through it all and then if questions arise.
Okay. Section three would be a statement of authority saying this local law ordinance is authorized by the municipal home rule law, chapter 36A of the Consolidated Laws of the State of New York and the General City Law, chapter 21 of the Consolidated Laws of the State of New York. Just clarifying that this is a home rule issue. Chapter four, or rather, what would become the new section four, which is the text that we have before us. I was thinking of adding a section B at the end of that to say, nothing in this section shall abrogate or limit the tenant's right pursuant to section 751 of the New York State Real Property Actions and Proceedings Law to permanently stay the issuance or execution of a warrant or eviction in a summary proceeding where they're characterized as a non-payment objectionable tenancy or holdover proceeding, the underlying basis of which is the non-payment of rent so long as the tenant complies with the procedural requirements of section 751 of the New York State Real Property Actions and Proceedings Law. And then there would be a section five titled separability. This is the last one. And that would read something like, the provisions of this local law or ordinance are separable, and if any provision, clause, sentence, section, subsection, word, or part thereof is held to be illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional, or inapplicable to any person or circumstance, such illegality, invalidity, or unconstitutionality or inapplicability shall not affect or impair any of the remaining provisions, clauses, sentences, subsections, words, or parts of this local law or their application to other persons or circumstances. It is hereby declared to be the legislative intent that this local law or ordinance would have been adopted is such illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional provision, clause, sentence, subsection, word, or part had not been included therein. And if such person or circumstance to which the local law or part hereof is held inapplicable had been specifically exempted therefrom. Those are the changes that I'm proposing.
Will you form a question?
Yes.
Before those of the whole committee, please.
So one of the things Randy read was what he calls an exorbitant increase. My understanding is that anything over 5% can be considered by the tenant to be exorbitant. And it's a very vague concept, you know, unconscionable or exorbitant increase. And, you know, this is one of the problems I have with this law is that there is many reasons why a landlord may need to raise it above 5%, such as renovating the apartment or renovating the building and roof and furnace, or that the tenant may be significantly below median rent and 10% would bring them up to a different level, but still a good deal for them. So, you know, I just continue to believe that this is, this presents a very difficult. It's hurtful to developers that want to come to our city. It's hurtful to owners of multifamily homes because it makes it more risky to have a multifamily property because tenants potentially stay, you know, for a very long time or indefinitely. And I just think that there are a lot of problems with this law, and this is one example of it.
So from what I understand, you know, the language of if the rent is raised more than 5%, the language of then the landlord would be able to challenge that in court, that language would still be in this legislation.
I have the same understanding, right, but then it's up to the judge to make that decision.
To make that decision. So the landlord still has a remedy.
They do theoretically, but then you're asking the judge to have wisdom of construction prices and what is, how much a furnace, whether it's fair or not, and also the pathway through the court system, as we all know, can be long and expensive because we have to hire counsel to represent us. So just that knowledge of, okay, maybe the judge will permit the increase, but maybe they won't, and maybe it'll take me six or seven months to get the answer, and I have to hire an attorney. I don't even want to bother. That's my perception.
My concern is that, like Don says, because this is so stringent and now we're twisting and weaving it so that it becomes even more difficult for landlords, landowners, property owners, that we're going to scare away people who would come or people who would develop a home or you don't change their home to accommodate people. I already hear people saying that they're going to stop renting their apartments because of this. I know it's a, people are experiencing crazy rents. I understand that. I don't think this is the way to handle that. I think we're just, I think really what we're doing is there's a gushing hole, right? And we're trying to stop it, right, with this legislation. But is it really, is it going to, what's our purpose? Our purpose is to house people, right, get them housing. This isn't going to do that. This is actually going to do the opposite of that.
Or keep people from losing their housing.
I, you know.
I think short term, yes. Long term, it's more of a Patrick's point.
I think over, right, right away, you're right. And then if this goes in, we only have 5% increases. In five years, it's 25%. That's a 25% increase. If people want to stick to this, you know, and have to take the risk of being a landowner, having to take the risk that they may have a forever tenant, having to take the risk of, there's a lot, and we're making it more difficult. We're not making it easier. Am I correct? You agree with that, right? We're not making this easier for landlords. This is making it tougher for them to operate their businesses, which is to give people housing. So I think you're right, Randy, in the beginning, right now. And I know you've said this many times, we need to do something right now. We're doing this right now, but in the long run, it's going to hurt housing in the city of Kingston. It's going to, we're going to have less housing, and those people that we're trying to help were actually going to hurt in the long run. And that does happen, you know, good deeds sometimes turn out to do, you know, not good things because they weren't thought through properly. They weren't looked at over the wrong hole, you know? And I think that's what this is. I think we're trying to put a Band-Aid on it. I think we're trying to fix it, and I get that. And, you know, we're all trying to do something, right? And that's, you know, I understand we're all trying to do something, but, you know, the tide, the, this is not the way to go about it. The way to go about it, maybe, is to have, you know, incentivize people to make apartments in their homes, incentivize people, builders, to come to our town and build more apartments. And of course, if we have more apartments, and everybody has, if there's enough apartments for everybody in town, well, then people are going to start lowering their rates because we have enough apartments then. That's really the way to handle housing, right? Build more housing. Build enough housing to the point where there's enough housing for everybody in the city of Kingston. Well, guess what's going to happen then? Well, then if housing prices are going to drop, and all these things that we talk about right now, all the things we're worried about right now would go away. They wouldn't go away. I mean, of course, of course, you have to pay for the housing, but that's what we need to be doing. I mean, as a council, we need to be seeking out people to come and build and helping property owners put apartments in their house and, you know, do zoning, right, so that we can build more housing. But that's the way to do it. This is not the way to do it. This is going to scare people from investing in our city. It's going to scare people from investing in housing.
The state of New Jersey has had a law like this on the books for 40 years. They've had a regulation against unconscionable rent increases. And two things are clear from their experience. One is it hasn't dented the market for building housing there at all. I don't know if you've been to Jersey City lately, but that place is just experiencing amazing housing growth. So I think that any argument that this would be deleterious to the development of housing just doesn't work in terms of the actual evidence that we've got. We've also seen a couple of other states pass laws like this at the state level, Colorado, California. So this is not something that's brand new. It's not something that's completely out of, you know, the science fiction world. It's been tried, and there's very clear evidence that this is something that's really important for tenants. Our current law tends to favor property owners. We have a huge amount of material of New York State law and also in our code that's all about the powers of property owners. The idea behind this law is simply to try to create an even playing field so that tenants can have some more clarity about their future in a particular house. Remember, a house is not just a good or a service, like oil that you buy, gasoline that you buy, Halloween candy. This is something that's an absolute human necessity. And so we have to find a proper balance between the powers of property owners and the needs of homeowners, home renters, rather. So this law does very little to really alter the power of landlords. It provides for a reasonable rent increase on a yearly basis. It provides for clarity in terms of when a landlord can evict somebody from a home. Those points are pretty much standard in most contracts anyway. So all we're doing really here is codifying what is, to a great extent, what exists currently. We're adding in some protections for tenants, but there is no threat to the development of housing from a law like this. I know some people are worried about it, but think about how many people did you hear who said that the new roundabout over here at Broadway in 581 was going to be the end of Kingston? It was going to be horrible. It was going to be terrible. It was going to be absolute utter destruction of the city. And yet, a lot of those same people are coming back to us and saying, yeah, actually, that was a great idea. That worked out really well. I'm also thinking of the story that Steve Shabbat told a friend of his who got really mad at him when RuppCo was developing the artist's housing, the lace mill. And he's like, that's a terrible idea. This is the worst thing that could possibly happen. After it was built, and he saw what it was, and he saw how it was fulfilling a need, Steve Shabbat talks about how the guy came up to him and basically was saying, yeah, I'm glad I proposed that idea. I'm glad I was a proponent of that idea, building that building. We've seen this time and again, that people are nervous when there's change. I understand that. Change can be difficult to envision. But in this particular case, we're facing, number one, an intense crisis brought on by the COVID pandemic. We've seen really steep increases in rents even before the pandemic. They've only gotten worse. We've seen increasing rents, and we see that there's the potential for some landlords to not act in a conscientible way. We know there are plenty of landlords in Kingston who are good. We know that because when we had our housing hearings about two years ago now, we had a number of people who came in and testified that their aim in having rental housing in a unit in their house or a second house that they rented out was not to receive market rates. The intent was to find good tenants, keep them there. And often, these landlords were not charging market rates. They weren't increasing the rent at all. If even, you know, unless there was an absolute necessity that they felt. And they actually felt bad about increasing the rent on their tenants. So I don't see this law as having a great effect in the long run in terms of either the development or availability of housing, but I see it as being essential to protecting the tenants in the city of Kingston and protecting the Kingston economy at large. If we keep losing all of our lower-end workers, what are we going to do then? We've already seen that there's been difficulties for a lot of our employers for hiring people, you know, in the service industry, because a lot of the folks at that end of the income spectrum haven't been able to afford to stay in Kingston, and they're moving to other places. So I see this as being a crucial balancing act that will not have any great effect in terms of the development of housing or the power of landlords to maintain their properties and to continue to do most of the things they do with them these days.
Most of the housing in Kingston is small mom-and-pop stuff. We got a couple of big things going on, but.
What, besides RuppCo?
Well, RuppCo. We've got RuppCo.
Well, the Kingston.
And the Kingston.
And you've got 160 units out here at Golden Hill.
Golden Hill?
Yeah.
In the last five years that I've been here, nothing has been built besides RuppCo.
Now, imagine this, right? You're a young, don't have to be young, but you want to get, you want to be an entrepreneur and you want to rent out some space. Okay, great. So you say, okay. And you don't have much money because you're just a single working person and you want to rent out some space in your home, or you want to build something. And all of a sudden, you realize that, you know, this landlord thing isn't for you. You say, oh, man, this is crazy. This is, you know, I can't deal with this, right? Now, you've spent all your money, right, because you're investing in this business, you're mom-and-pop kind of people. You're investing in this business. You decide like, oh, you know what? This landlord thing's not, it's not working out for me. I just don't want to do it anymore. It's too much. It's putting pressure on my family. It's putting too much pressure on me. Guess what? You're stuck. You got a tenant in there you can't get rid of, ever, maybe. Especially if there are some kind of, if the state is giving you the check every week and they're paying your rent and then they're not bothering people, you can't get out.
That's not true. There's a lot of ways you can get out.
So now, listen, 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 I listened to you and didn't interrupt. Now, the other thing is, if you do want to sell this place now that you bought it, can't handle because you emotionally can't handle it or financially can't handle it, you thought you could, but now you can't. Now you want to put it up for sale, but guess what? The tenant has to go with it. So the next person that buys this building has to, has to, take that tenant with it. This is not, this is going to damage people. Nobody's going to get involved in that. Who's going to put, who's going to do that? What people putting all their money up, you know, as a young person or as a young entrepreneur or as an entrepreneur, who's going to put all their money up and then risk the fact that they may not be able to get out of this thing? And who's going to want their tenant when they sell it? This is not good. This is not good for those people. So not only is it not, it's not good for them, that's going to send shockwaves through the community of people who want to do this kind of thing. And anybody coming to Kingston is going to say, I don't want to do that. I'm not going to come there and do that. I'm not going to buy a double house or a four-person, a four-apartment building. I was going to live in one. I'm not going to do that anymore. Because what happens if I, it doesn't work out? If it doesn't work out, I'm in trouble. I'm in deep trouble. And that's not a risk that I'd be willing to take. So maybe you're scaring people away. And I think that's another, I think that's another big factor you have to think about before you do something like this, you know? Are you going to stagnate that natural economy that when young or when entrepreneurs, people want to make a little money off their property?
That's what I'm going to say again. I think that's on the show.
Go ahead.
I was going to say that already exists where if a landlord wants to sell a building, that those leases go with the building. It's a landlord can't evict those people, right? That's already.
Yeah, but a lease can end, and then you can, a lease can end. This doesn't end. That's the difference. A lease ends after a year. You make an agreement, a year, it's over. Now you're saying, never over.
That's not what it's.
Well, what are you saying then?
That's not, I mean, there's mechanisms in this legislation where a landlord could terminate a lease, but I want to go back to what you said about, you talked about the economy. What's it going to do to the economy? If I can, what's happening?
No, that rural economy I'm saying about people wanting to be landlords.
Well, I'm talking about the present, right now. Like, what's happening now? What do you see happening right now in a city of Kingston when it comes to development or when it comes to rents, tenants, housing? What do you see right now that's going on in Kingston? And why legislation like this is being proposed? Why? What do you see right now? Right, and you're talking about people not wanting to come to Kingston, but we have people leaving Kingston because they cannot afford the rent. I'm talking about right now.
I know you're talking about right now.
Right now.
I know, I know, really. I know, but we've got to sometimes, as I said, we've got to think down the road further sometimes than right now. We could give aid right now. We should be, right now, we should be giving people a check and saying, here, we're going to do this until things get better. And in the meantime, why aren't we building some buildings? Why isn't the city of Kingston building some buildings?
That has nothing to do with this law. That has to do with our zoning code. That has to do with our zoning code and other problems that we've had for a long time.
So I'm saying, we can help these people right now if you want to. Take, we're doing the budget right now. Let's cut some of that budget and, and help, give it, give relief to tenants.
We don't have a mechanism for that. We've, no, we can't do that.
So if a landlord can like jack up their rent 70%, and then we're just supposed to pay that money to a landlord? I mean, I have people calling me where their rent, their neighbors, new leases are going up 67%. These are senior citizens whose lease is going to run out this July. And what do I tell them?
I don't know what you tell them.
Been calling me for two years.
I don't know what you tell them.
This is a problem that really is horrible. I don't know what you say, because, because, yes, it's, what do you do if you're a tenant? You can't afford it and be kicked out. What are you going to be homeless or, it's horrible, but whose role is it to be a safety net? Government or the landlord? And this is, you know, and so I don't think that this, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do something to help tenants who can't afford, you know? It's just a terrible, it's a terrible problem. It's a terrible problem on both sides. I want to take issue with one thing Rennie said. You know, there are stipulations in the law that, that you can remedy, but you know, those are only in theory. If I have a tenant who's smoking and cursing and aggravating other people in the building, the only way I could get that person evicted is to go to the judge, and I have to prove that this person is being, you know, a nuisance to the other tenants. And to prove it, other tenants would have to have a deposition, would have to, would have to say, would have to stick their neck out and say that, yes, this tenant is a problem, but people are afraid of doing that. You know, I don't, I don't know if this guy has a gun or if he's crazy, so if I'm a tenant that is being bothered by a tenant, I'm not going to speak out against him because I don't want to endanger myself and my family. So while, yes, there are technically legal avenues, each one is problematic and each one takes a long time and each one is, is an uncertain whether it's going to prevail or not. But that's just, I'm responding to something Rennie said. But, you know, overall, it's just a, it's just a, it's a Gordian knot here. I don't know how we can, you know, we, we shouldn't, this is hard, almost impossible to solve, you know? It really is. And, and, and I think that we do need to do something, except this isn't the way to do it. Because this is saying, you know, tenants need more protections? Yes, they do. But to, to say, well, owners, you may have to stick, you may have to keep a tenant that you can't get rid of, that's not fair to the owner. And I don't have the answer, but this is, this legislation is not the answer.
You can't get rid of paragraph three, the tenant. The landlord can evict the tenant who is committing or committing a nuisance in such housing accommodation, common areas or other areas of property. And these include things like smoking inside a residential unit, where smoking is prohibited by the landlord, and failure to dispose of waste created by the tenant's pets. These are all things that are allowed under this law.
But Rennie, you have to prove that.
I'm sorry?
I'm just helping you.
No. The number of times when this happens compared to the number of people in Kingston who are losing their houses because they're simply seeing rents go up because some landlords want to increase the rent at an unconscionable rate, this is minor compared to that problem. And so this is already possible to do, and it's in the code here so that you know as a tenant that if you're doing these things, the landlord can say, hey, you're doing these things, I'm going to have you evicted if you don't stop. So it allows for the, this actually creates a possibility for greater collaboration between landlord and tenant, because if the landlord is getting reduced major renovations, the landlord can be in touch with the, the tenants, let them know what's going on. It creates a greater possibility of communication so that they don't go to court as much. As a matter of fact, we were talking to one of the lawyers who was as committal in creating the ETPA for the state, who was saying that the experience she's seen is that laws like this actually reduce the burden in the courts because the landlords know what their limits are. So that leads them to be in greater communication with their tenants. That's not something that I'm making up. That's testimony from a lawyer who was involved in this, who has seen cases on those lines.
I'm sorry, there's no public speaking.
There's no public speaking?
Is that discussion for the committee members? Were you welcome to speak at the committee council meeting?
Oh, once that, I'm sorry.
That is on...
December 7th?
December 7th.
December 7th at 7:30.
I can listen.
Sure.
But that didn't, that doesn't account for the person I was talking about who tried to become a landlord, make a little extra money for themselves, and they realized that they, they made a mistake. They were, they, they made a mistake. And this, this mistake now with this law is going to ruin them.
Accessory dwelling unit is what you're talking about, you know, having this one extra apartment, for instance.
And that's, that's not covered?
Because they put out their money. They put out their, they put out their money.
One unit's not covered in this.
I'm not, what?
Somebody who has one unit...
I'm not talking about one. I'm talking about, well, how many, two or more, right?
Yeah, but also, if you want to take it back, if you want to, you turn even up to 112 units, if you want to turn that into your own private home, you can do that. You can have the, the tenants leave. You can evict them in that case. There's, there's two different ways that you can ask, that you can have tenants move out if you decide you don't want to rent anymore.
So you, so you got, you built this, you own it, you built this, this three-unit apartment on a piece of land, you're trying, and you realize you can't do it. So now it's within this law, the three units. The people are, the people are paying their rent, however they get it, they're, they're paying their rent, you're not getting any complaints, but you know you can't financially handle this. You're, you can't financially handle it, may emotionally handle it, whatever the situation is. Now, in order to sell that piece of property, you have to sell it with the people inside it. That's, 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 that could be very damaging. Who's going, who, the next, the next tenant, the next owner may not want to take these people on. Maybe nobody wants to take these people on.
That's already stated, though. That's what, that's what Michelle said. And so here, it says clearly, the landlord, that the landlord can evict tenants if he seeks in good, here she seeks in good faith, I'm sorry, Tony D., if you're there, Tony wants to be led into the meeting.
I just did it.
Say it, Rita.
Section seven here says, if the landlord seeks in good faith to recover possession of a housing accommodation located in a building containing fewer than 12 units because of immediate and compelling necessity for their own personal use and occupancy as their personal residence or their personal use and occupancy as principal residence of their partner, spouse, parent, child, stepchild, father-in-law, or mother-in-law, when no other simple housing accommodation in such building is available. This paragraph shall permit recovery of only one housing accommodation and shall not apply to a housing accommodation occupied by a tenant who is 62 years of age or older or who is a disabled person. Number eight reads, the landlord seeks in good faith to recover possession of any or all housing accommodations located in a building with less than five units to personally occupy such housing accommodation as their principal residence.
Okay, so this unit is a standalone unit. These people bought. They bought a three-unit apartment. They thought they were going to do great, but they, they can't do it, they can't make it.
And they sell it.
It's going to destroy them.
They sell it.
No, no. Now they got to sell it with people inside it because of this law.
They already have to. Not because of this law.
That's already, that's already in law.
Yeah, but, but if they have a lease, you can end the lease. You could, when the lease ends, then you can say, okay, you know what? This is the end of the lease. Now I can sell my building and I can get out from under this, this tremendous amount of stress.
Or what would happen is now I can have these tenants get out and I can put more tenants in and I can raise the rent. That's where we're going with this.
I know, Rita. That happens too. But you got to, you got to remember, the other situation happens too. And you can't just, you know, not think that there's, there's, there's people out there who are actually trying to house people, actually trying to. The city of Kingston's not really doing, we're not building any new housing here. Right? Have you heard, anybody proposed any housing in this, in this, in this group? No.
We don't build housing. The city of Kingston doesn't build housing.
Maybe we should if we're going to be, if we're going to, if we're going to be taking on these things. If our cities in such dire need, maybe we should be doing it. How about the Kingston Housing Authority? Who built those?
That's federal and state monies.
I'm not saying the money. So the money. So we get, we ask the state and the federal government, look, we got some property here, we want to build some buildings. Why can't we do that? We can't.
We, we are doing that, as a matter of fact. So KHA is actually in the process of trying to build a new set of buildings. They're also trying to renovate another set of buildings to increase the number of units.
Good. That's what we should be doing. And then the property, then when there's enough housing for people, then property prices come down. But in the meantime, you can't stifle people who want to, you know, rent property with this law. I don't, it's just, it's just the opposite of what we need to be doing.
It's just, it's not right. All there is to it. Some people might be a little concerned about it. I think in the end, not going to have a huge effect on, on people who want to rent out to make money.
And, you know, Patrick, we, you know, you keep talking about the future. I understand that we have to look at the future right now, but I am concerned it's what's happening right now. I walk in up and down Broadway and I see people sleeping on those pretty benches that the city put out on Broadway. You know, the calls that we get, people not being able to afford to stay in there.
It's sad, it's sad. I know it's sad.
And it coming to fruition, because then you see them out on the street.
I know.
You're a school teacher too, Patrick. You know what it was like to have kids that are homeless in shelters, being bused into the district? It's not good for our district. We can't create a strong...
I'm not saying it's not, but it's...
Without good schools and stable schools.
Yeah, I understand this responsibility, but you shouldn't be putting it onto a land, a, 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 a property owner. I understand this society has a great, a great need and, and we should help people, but not making landlord or property owners the, the ones that are doing it. That's what you're doing here. You're making the property owner bear the brunt of this when this whole community should be. So Rita, we don't, we should be housing those people somehow. We should be getting them help.
Or we should be keeping them in their houses, in their houses.
But not at the expense of others.
But it's a service that goes back and forth. I mean, you keep making it sound like it's an unsighted thing. You know, landlords are getting rent from tenants. This is to balance things out. It's not like landlords, let's not, tenants are not staying in apartments or housing for free. They are paying to stay there. So it's a service. You're saying if a landlord is, if they're going to be a landlord, it is their responsibility to provide housing. You're providing a service that you're getting paid for.
Wonder if they financially can't do it? What happens to them? Wonder if, wonder if they, I know a lot of people, you know, overextend themselves with credit cards and things like, wonder if a landlord has to go bankrupt? What happens to the people in the building?
They stay there till the new owner.
They stay there till the new owner? There's got to be a better way than to, to put the burden onto us. It should be taken by the entire community, not, not just a certain group of entrepreneurs that want to be, house people. So, you know what I mean? So we're putting this burden onto the people that are actually housing people. I know you guys think it's logical, but it's not logical.
It's their business.
Okay.
It's not logical.
Hold on, Tony Davis is joining virtually. He has his hand up. Tony, you can unmute yourself and speak if you want.
Hello, everybody. How you guys doing? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry I got in here late. I was in another meeting, but, uh, so I listened to what's going on here. So if you just correct it, and I just caught this out here, that if the landlord goes bankrupt or a landlord passes away or something, and did I just hear it right, that, that tenant still stays in there with the new landlord? If this landlord sells their property, the tenants get to remain in that house? And if the landlord passes away, the tenants get to remain in this, this, this apartment and, and that a new person takes over?
Yeah, that's state law. That's, that's not this law. That's, that's already established.
If they have a lease, this is a never-ending lease.
All right. I did not know that, so thank you.
Give me a minute.
You know what, you know what, I do have to say.
Go ahead, Tony.
I do have another question. If you go, and again, I don't have all this paperwork in front of me. I apologize. Can you, I think Rennie was reading something when I came on. Was those all the scenarios? Could you go over the scenarios of, of this good cause eviction? And what, what, what the, what can the landlord evict somebody for? I believe you guys had that.
This is, this is... They were amendments, and Rennie, you can send a email at all.
Yeah, yeah.
So they, they were...
There's a lot of things. I don't want to rehash this whole thing.
I need to send mail in, please.
All righty, thank you.
Tony, are you asking about what's in the law or are you asking about the...
The convictions.
What, what, the additions? Okay.
What are the reasons?
But Tony, the thing, the thing is, you have to, it's not about the ones that you can, it's the ones that they haven't listed you got to worry about.
You know, first, first, I would just like to take a look at, and, you know, what, what, what are, what's in this good cause eviction? What, what is in there? And I'm not sure what you guys have done amendments or not, of what's going to be allowed for a landlord to evict a tenant. That's what I want to see first.
It's most of the standard options, Tony. So actually, it's all the same, Tony. It's available if you go to the city's website. This is the, the basic law that we're looking at is in the agenda. So if you go to tonight's, if you go to the calendar on the city's website for tonight, laws and rules, the agenda actually, for some reason, has two copies of the, the basic legislation. And you can see there, the first several items are the ones that give the landlord the basis for evicting a tenant. So these have to do with things like not paying the rent, or the tenant is violating a reasonable obligation of their tenancy, that sort of thing, or the tenant is committing and permitting nuisances. Or the, the occupancy of the housing accommodation by the tenant is in violation of or causes a violation of law that subjects the landlord to civil or criminal penalties. Or the tenant is using or committing the house for an illegal purpose, or has unreasonably refused landlord access to the housing accommodation for repairs and improvements. So, you know, like I've said in other places, in essence, with this, it might really be called just a reasonable explanation. So that it's letting the landlords and the tenants both know what are the reasons why a landlord can ask somebody to leave an accommodation.
Basically giving them a right to renew without exorbitant, as long as they've been a good tenant, without exorbitant rent increases.
Say it again?
It's basically a right to renew, as long as they've been a good tenant, without exorbitant rent increases.
It's a right to use another person's property for, forever.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
It really is. How can you really write on that? Potentially, potentially it is.
Potentially it is. This is not the kind of stuff that you want to mess with.
It's a disaster for.
As I pointed out, they've had this new jersey for 40 years and.
Well, they build there. We don't build here.
Well, we don't build here because of the reasons why we're changing our zoning code. We don't build here because our zoning code has been so difficult that, uh, I don't know if you, you weren't here in 2005. You were when, uh, a company was trying to build on the, the old, um, parking garage site and they basically could not figure out our zoning code. And, you know, the, the, it, it had a lot to do with these extraneous factors, nothing to do with the legislation we're looking at here.
I also know some builders who came to town, decided to leave because, because of us, because of what we're doing here. So, um, Tony, uh, the evictions, we, there's a lot of stuff in here that are already New York state law. So why are we repeating it? I'm, I'm not sure. It's, it's more like a pamphlet or something, or giving information to people. So we're repeating a lot of state law here al- already, or state mandates, or, or whatever they, whatever they have there. But the real fact of the matter is, you know, um, you know, you're saying this, you're saying to someone, "Look, you, you, you own that piece of property. That's right. You went to the bank, bought it. You did everything you need to do. But now you don't have rights to that property. You don't have, you don't have rights to that property. You made an agreement with somebody to stay for a year and now that person can stay for, forever as long as they pay the rent and they're not doing any of those eviction things that, that are happening." Or to catch someone doing something like that is very difficult anyhow, a lot of those things anyhow. So, so that's what you're, that's what you're saying. You're saying to someone, you know, it's, it's just, it's, it's, it's not right. You can do that to somebody. How can we do that to someone?
I don't know how many times we can say that. Not true. I'm almost starting to believe, you want to believe what you're saying is true. Because we keep saying that is.
Don's saying, Don's has the same concern, I do, Rita.
I understand. And look, look, I'm not trying to dismiss it or anything, but telling you that is not, that legislation does not tell property owners that you have no rights. That is just, I, I, I wish you would stop saying that because that is just false information.
In a sense, though, the contract of the lease doesn't matter anymore, right? Because the lease could be expired and, well, the lease could be in place, but it doesn't matter. It depends on what the judge says. Right? The lease can say that after 2021, you can be evicted or, or, you know, but where the truth is that, that lease doesn't matter because a tenant can say, "I don't care about the lease. I have a right to renew unless I've broken windows or broken rules." So in effect.
Right, but wouldn't that be with regular eviction anyway though? With regular eviction, you still have to go to court and the judge has to decide.
Martin, lease is up.
And so if the tenant is doing, is wrong doing wrong, that you'd go to eviction court for that.
But how do you improve your building and, and pay for it with rent increase?
You can do that if a landlord.
You can do this law allows you to do that.
If the judge approves.
No, no, it doesn't. It's not only if the judge approves. If the landlord goes to the tenant and says, "You know that leak you've got? That's because we have to replace the roof. That's going to cost this much. Here's the, here's my contractor. He's showing what it's going to cost to replace the rent. So I can, I'm going to increase your rent, um, you know, appropriately to take care of that and it's going to be over 5%."
What the landlord says is appropriate. The tenant might say, "No, that's not appropriate at all. That is inappropriate and exorbitant and over 5%. So I'm not going to pay more than 5%."
That could happen, but a lot of people will say, "Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. I agree. I, I understand that you're putting an investment into this property." So, you know, I have a more optimistic viewpoint of how people might respond here, I think, than you do. I, I believe that if people are given a good cause, a good reason for why an increase over 5% is necessary, that most people will see that. But it's, it's, this is what I mean by it increases the communication between the landlord and the tenant. Because the tenant can come to them and say, "Here, I'm, I'm letting you know what's, you know, what I need to do, what's going to, what's coming up here so that I can maintain this property in a good fashion for you to live in." It increases the communication as opposed to forcing them always to go to a judge.
Don, can I ask, can I ask you something? If a landlord hasn't made any improvements on an apartment, do you think it's appropriate to take, like, say, a $1,200 apartment and raise it 67% into a $2,000 on a one bedroom apartment in the city of Kingston right now?
No way.
So what's the remedy?
That's really a good question. And it's, I don't have an answer, but it's not passing a law like this that hurts investment and hurts, it hurts landlords. You're right though. What you're, you're, I can't argue with that. That is not right.
Yeah, that's a gouge.
No, and that's what this is trying to do. It's not trying to, it's, it's not.
No, no, I get it. Good intentions. Just with that with unintended consequences.
Right, exactly. Now, we in our law, we in our law here have down that if it's two units or more, correct? Now, the Albany one I thought had more than that, maybe like three or four units of one. Why does ours have to be so stringent? Why are we trying to make, why are we trying to hit the mom and pop who have a, a, a mother daughter house and then they got somebody in the garage and somebody upstairs in the attic? Why are we trying to help, why are we hitting those people? The, 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 the mom and pop? Why don't we make it, why don't we make it four units or more? Why are we making it?
Where, where do you see that in the legislation?
What?
No, Albany's, Albany's.
I thought you said two units or more. This would affect, this would affect landlords.
I'm asking you where do you see it in the legislation?
Did you remove it? Did you remove it?
I'm asking you where you see it.
Randy, you're not looking at it.
Did you remove it?
I'm asking you, where is it in the legislation?
Oh, you told, you said that it was two units or more.
I'm asking you where you see it.
How many units is it? Can you tell me? How many units is this effect? Do you have one unit? Is a, is a good cause eviction affect that? Two units, three units, four units? When does, when does it come into effect? I think our legislation is too stringent.
I think that's a good point in that if we did this, we should at least say six units and above. So we're not hurting people who have accessory, a couple accessory apartments, you know, two or three unit, at least.
Yeah. So why don't we compromise a little? You know, and not hurt the mom and pop who are trying to make a couple extra bucks and they are struggling themselves, paying taxes and, you know, getting by and their wages. And they got a couple, they got a couple of units they want to rent. You know, why we, why would, why would we want to?
So six was, six is what the emergency tenant protection act, six is what, um, the threshold for affordable housing is, right? Yes, in the city of Kingston.
So there's some consistencies there.
Why does it have to be one unit for two? Randy, have you read it, found it yet?
Uh, I have you.
No, I haven't.
Have you read this?
Guys, stop. This was Albany, what they passed. So I don't know if it's in there or not, but that's where this comes from.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of different municipalities are, um, proposing different.
Numbers, right?
Okay, but our, this conversation came from Albany. So.
Right, it came from Albany. I thought Albany is.
Yeah, that's something that we have to deliberate and discuss amongst ourselves. Like, you know, we can't, couldn't even figure out what's best for our community.
Yeah, I don't see it in, in the proposal that's on the table, not binding a, a unit. So it is something to put at, as part of the, as part of the suggested amendments. I'm just trying to figure out where.
Well, I would suggest. I would feel better.
I, well, we would need to discuss the number.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, just because you're renting downstairs, you know, basement, you're stuck in this thing. I know.
I think six is too many.
Yeah, six might be too many. I'd be okay with.
I'd be okay with.
But six, you're.
Four.
I'm going to go to suggest why having six is a good number. Because then you're more of a business. Multi-family owners that have six or more units, that's their business. But.
That is their business.
But people that have two or three or four apartments, it's just some side income and just, you know, to help them out. I'm sure you know people that have done this. You know, they're not real estate professionals. They're, they're construction workers, or whatever they're doing. This is to help give them supplemental income. But once it's six or more, that's their business typically. So that's why I think it's.
And once it gets too frustrating for them, they're not going to do it.
Well, the human rights laws, four units or more, hidden state, they're struggling for complaints on, on four.
Four or more?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So we would have to change this because this, the one that we're debating here actually says no landlord. So we would have to clarify a number of units.
Yeah, no landlord. I, X and Y will be in it somewhere.
Well, we want to say no property. Because if we say no landlord, that could be, they could own four houses and then be exempt. Right?
So a building?
Yeah.
Four units of the building. That, I mean, that would at least be some, some of my concern about, you know, the small mom and pop people, you know? And the fact that they're not going to want to deal with, you know, any more than they already have on their plate.
Yeah, I would not have a problem.
I would want six, not four.
Why not?
Because I think a lot of people will have a three family or four, four family, but still that's a side gig. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would go with the smaller number. And then if we find that it's an issue, uh, because, you know, we always have the power to amend the law. So I personally would go for a smaller number and then, um, uh, we would be getting information back. Um, and we, I mean, we could do research and see what the actual effect is.
It's a very intangible thing. To see what the effect is, you know, you're not going to be able to measure people who said, "Nah, I'm not going to Kingston. Too many rules."
In that case, then it's intangible and I think we have all the more reason to have a lower number.
Well, can we get from the DPW a, uh, some kind of data on that? You know, the number of units of an apartment?
Building saved, you mean?
A building saved.
We have a landlord registration.
Landlord registration and figure, you know, and maybe we can take a look at that. I don't know. But I'd be, I would say six units, you're definitely, you know, you're definitely running a business. Five units, maybe two, you know what I mean? Four units, that's, that's a house, you know? That's a big house cut into four pieces.
Actually, that's a good point. I think that's a good point to break, break between four and five. That is exactly true. Many houses, you buy a house and, and two units upstairs, two units downstairs.
That's right. So that's four units. So if they have four units in the house and they're, you know, and they're living in one, all of a sudden, they're like, "Okay, forget this. Let's close this Victorian up. Let's make it a single. We're going to sell it. Let's get this, let's get out of here."
But if we have four units and you're living on the unit, I think three, so this would.
Right, in that case.
Yeah, so as long as we say.
And traveling, don't live there, then it's difficult.
Right.
Yeah, but I think it all, it also has to clarify its owner occupied. So four units, um, as long as the, the, the building's owner occupied.
I would say five units if it's owner occupied.
Yeah, then you're, then you're disincentivizing someone to buy a house.
A four unit house.
Down the street to restore it, make an investment in their, in their neighborhood.
I, I think five, I think five's a number.
Currently, you can't just take a, a house and turn it into four units. I mean, like in our, our, uh, three, our residential sections, you can't do that.
Right, but in other sections you can.
Yeah, the zoning should have changed. Um, I think Don's right. I think, I think investment property, you buy one, you, you could put it, you know, you could take a, a big house and make it into four units. So then, anything above that, four units, I think five's a number. Five would be a good number for me. I really feel comfortable with that number. Because then it would only be one house off the market, you know what I mean? That, that, it'd only be one, it would only be that one house affected by this. You know what I mean? It's not like it's going to affect.
I'm not comfortable with five. I mean, we went from two to six. Now we want to go to five. I think four is a good, if we're going to compromise here, four is a good number.
We're not negotiating.
Yeah, from two up to six. And then.
But the number, the number five is not, it's not, we're trying, trying to find compromise to a number.
I'm trying to find the balance. I'm trying to.
Right, but just think of the real life situation. That's what I'm presenting.
I am thinking about real life situation. I'm thinking about how many calls I get that people cannot afford to be in their house. That's my, that's what I'm thinking about. I'm thinking about how I see people sleeping on the benches in Kingston because they have nowhere to live. I see people.
We're trying to solve that. You know, it's not like.
I understand, I understand that, but you, you're telling me to think past what I know is now. I can't do that.
But you think about creating more apartments. This, this, this will, you know, divide people.
But what's happening now.
I may appreciate.
Yeah, that's not, that's, that's not happening anymore, Don. It's not happening. The opposite is happening right now.
But might be telling me to be turned into the same family?
No, the opposite of, we're, we're talking about housing people. The opposite effect is happening right now, where people are being driven out.
Right, I know, but I'm trying to create more apartments, take one building, turn it to four, and not disincentivize.
Before this even, this legislation came into, uh, into our purview, how many people have you seen, or how many developers have you seen that take this, taking their houses and turn them into multi-building apartments so they can house people? Right now, right now. Who's doing that? Where is that happening?
I see the opposite happen. Break, next break down the street from Randy's house where they took a Victorian and now they gutted it and they put a beautiful brand new front porch on it. And guess what? It's going to be a one family. And it was housing several apartments.
Where?
On Main Street.
That Main and Johnston?
Yeah. No, not Main and Johnston. Main and Lafayette, right next, right, right down by Jefferson.
But that was two units.
That was a lot of people living in there and over the course of, of last 20 years when those people.
A media used to live there. It's two units. That, that's always been a duplex.
And now what is it?
It's still a duplex.
They're still making, it's still a duplex. They ripped it out and everyone asked us their apartments. That, that big house is getting redone? One of the, the front works is getting redone?
We're talking about a different house.
It's Doug's house and that two down from Doug's house or one down from Doug's house?
No, you're talking about toward Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a, that was, there used to be a lot of rentals in there and now, now they've changed, they're changing. They're changing. And that is happening. So that what happens is the market gets less and this is what's going to happen when people are.
That's not happening because of good cause eviction. That's not happening because of that.
Well, right. But it could, you know, but I'm just saying, it could be another, you know, I was talking, there were a man called, I get calls too. A man called me and said, "Look, I'm not, I'm never renting my place out again. Once my last tenant leaves now, I'm not, I'm not going to rent anymore because I, I, I'm not going to deal with this stuff." So it, that's happening too, Rita, you know? And if history, if, if history has anything to say, in San Francisco, they tried, they tried to put pressure onto landlords and that's what happened. They, they closed up their apartments and they, they made them into one bedrooms and they turned them into condos and everybody was, and the whole thing backfired. This is, this is the, this is what happens when you do stuff like this.
Yeah, but also the state of California passed an accessory dwelling law. So the whole state is known for accessory law, California. So they, they're also doing other stuffs. There's like, it's not just one piece.
I think we can move on.
I understand.
Are you leaving?
You're understanding.
I mean, we can, we can argue all night back and forth. How does the community, the committee want to proceed?
I think Patrick mentioned, right, going to the building department to look at data or?
I don't know what, I don't know if they have that or whatever. I mean, if, if, if that's a possibility.
The, the apartment registrations that be filled out by all multi-family owners so they could tell us how many, um, of all of our multi-family homes, how many are six family, five family, four family, three family, two family.
I mean, we know what six and above is already, yeah, Don.
True. I mean, are we, are you guys really proposing to, that you want this to happen to? I mean, are we, are you guys really proposing to, that you want this to happen to a mom, a, a person who's in their home? Is that, is that what we're proposing? That someone who has a house with an apartment in it, we, we wanna do, we wanna do this to them? Are we proposing that?
We just talked about raising the number of units.
I know. Uh, uh, okay. I'm just saying. I'm just asking, that's all.
Okay, so I think what Jeffrey was asking is how we're gonna make a decision to move forward and make it, to decide on that number.
So, uh, what if we had language at the beginning that says, no landlord shall remove a tenant from any housing accommodation situated in a building of more than three units or attempts such removal, blah, blah, blah. So that would put a limit at four.
Is that ready? Can you read that again?
No landlord shall remove a tenant from any housing accommodation situated in a building of more than three units.
So it's confusing.
Well.
Yeah, with the entire building being four units or five, you know?
Right, because that presumes that the landlord is living in the building. Right, ready?
Uh, we could put that in specifically. Or we could say, um, leave it at no landlord and then say uh, at the end, um, buildings that are owner occupied possessing, what's the number? Three rental units or fewer are exempt from this legislation.
I think that makes it more complicated than just say no building of four units or more.
Right.
Rather than putting a lot of, keep like.
Yeah.
Yeah. No building that has four units or more.
No, if it has four units or more, then they, then they would be under this. What's that?
So we would say buildings.
So you're saying like somebody wants five buildings in town that have three apartments?
Uh, so if we just said buildings of four units or fewer are exempt from this legislation.
So a building is any improved real property, you guys mentioned, and then owner, and a rental. Like in our code already, we have these definitions.
Mm-hmm. So is building the appropriate word?
Yes. Or and real rental property includes all properties which are either rented, leased, let, or hired out to be occupied for residential or mixed use. Building, any improved real property, residential or mixed use, commercial, residential, located within the city of Kingston that is non-owner occupied.
I was gonna say, yes, what if we just added a section of definitions at the beginning?
What does that do?
To clarify?
To clarify what the definition of a building as it pertains to this law is and then we can say four units or more. What the definition of the landlord is for that case.
Well, we already have that in code, right?
Yeah, we have, um, we don't, we have action or proceeding, these are the definitions in three, twenty, twenty, uh, three, three, two, one. Uh, action or proceeding, building, identification of building, owner, process, rented property.
Could you refer back to the code and the legislation?
You know, just, yeah, reiterate.
If we have a registration of owner.
Wait, any buildings as defined in code three, what is it, three, twenty, whatever? Any buildings as defined in code three, twenty?
So. I'm sorry.
Okay, and then the language you read.
Well, the Newburgh law has some definitions. Uh, so they define disabled person means is applied according to the definitions set forth in New York State Public Housing Law. Housing accommodation is what they use instead of building means residential premises including dwelling, dwelling unit or rooming unit as defined in this chapter located, you'd say in the city of Kingston. And I think that's actually good because then what that means is this would be specifically referring to residential and there wouldn't be any confusion with mixed use or commercial properties. Landlord means any owner, leasers, sub-leasers, assigner, or other person receiving or entitled to receive rent for the occupancy of any housing accommodation or the agent of any foregoing. Rent means any consideration including any bonus, benefit, or gratuity demanded or received for or in consideration with possession, use, or occupancy of housing accommodations, or the execution of transfers, lease for such housing accommodations. And tenant means a tenant, sub-tenant, lessed, sub-lessed, assigning, main, factor, home tenant as defined in paragraph one, subsection A, blah, blah, blah. So they give, you know, we could just adopt these basic definitions if we wanted to. Oh, and so this is, and then here also in the Newburgh law, it says, there's a section that says applicability. And it says, um, this article shall apply to all housing accommodations except, A, owner occupied premises with less than four units, uh, premises where the possession, uh, use occupancy, which is solely incident to employment and such employment if people have terminated. Premises otherwise subject to regulation of rents or evictions pursuant to state or federal law, et cetera. Uh, premises, uh, sublet pursuant to subsection two hundred, so.
Had they worded it when I first, no, you first read it, they worded it.
A, owner occupied, it says, this article shall apply to all housing accommodations except owner occupied premises with less than four units.
That's what we're talking, that's what we're saying. That's a great idea here, easier to understand.
But that, that person that wants to buy a, 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 a small unit, this doesn't, this doesn't do it for them. You have to be owner occupied. You know what I'm saying? That, that unit that Don was talking about where they bought a house and they, and they wanted to make it into apartments, which we're, which we, we should be thankful people are doing that, if they are. Um, those now would, would not, would not be, uh, and they would, and of course, they would have to deal with this stress.
So you would feel more comfortable if, say, well, it's not.
Yeah, it was just four, built, four, if it's four let, if it's four lets, right? Four. Is it three or more? Is it three or more?
More than three, which would be four.
More than three. So that would give the person that's mother, daughter, or somebody upstairs, at least, you know, they wouldn't have to be stressed over this. They couldn't get the person out of the attic for the rest of their lives.
That'd be helpful.
I know, Rita.
Um, I will send these to you all in just a second.
So then the question comes back to how do we proceed?
Uh, well, we, I think we can just look at these proposed changes, um, and then if, if we're agreeable with those, we go, right?
Are you sending those to us either?
Yes.
Randy, when you finish that, I just have one.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, the language just around, um, in the possession of, you know, taking back the one housing accommodation occupied by a tenant who's sixteen years of age or older or who is a disabled person, if we can just change that to a person with disability. Yeah.
Sorry, which section of that?
Oh, seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you just sent the, just the amendment. Okay.
Hi, um, was I included on that email that was just sent with the changes?
It's coming.
Okay, thanks.
Are you sending it to everyone?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's gonna take me a second.
I've only got old business.
Yes, I think it's a lot, it'll be an hour. I was like, I'll be back in an hour. I said, I just want, right?
Are you kidding? It takes, it takes a half hour for Pat to get his thoughts?
That's right. I'm sorry about that.
So do we need to do anything now?
We're working on the changes.
Right, besides that?
Yes. We're gonna vote.
All right, I sent it. Thank you. Uh, and I'm thinking that this would have to be a local law because looking at three, three, two, it says amended three, five, two thousand nineteen by local law number one.
And the, um, the amendments we made for the eviction moratorium for the landlord registration, remember, that was also a local law.
Yeah. I thought we were gonna make it a, a four, uh, just a four unit per house, not owner occupied.
This is what it said. I mean, I copied it over, so we have to.
The changes in here.
Yeah.
The change, we have to put the changes.
Oh, okay.
Um, are we good with those definitions?
Yeah, I mean, they're the same ones that we use for, if I turn it.
Okay. Um, and so then how do we change? Hey, what does it want to say? I mean, I'm in favor of saying owner occupied because that, that creates a clear separation between people who are doing this kind of as, you know, almost community service as opposed to those who are doing it clearly for, um, economic purposes.
What's wrong with that, right?
Because you're trying to clarify the difference between the folks who are doing this, the mom and pops that, um, that Pat mentioned. Uh, so you're keeping it, you know, in the realm of those folks who are doing this as a way of, in essence, kind of protecting their property, you're paying their income tax, I mean, their property tax through rentals. And you're distinguishing that from people who are treating this as a business, that's what I should say, treating it as a business.
Okay, so I would propose, I mean, in response, if I buy a little three family or four family house down in my neighborhood and to try to restore it and that is not business, that's something that I'm doing, yes, to make money, but also helping my neighborhood provide more house. So I think I would not want to say that.
Well, I think, then that's something we would need to write off. I mean, because I'm, I'm pretty, uh, committed to that. Because I think this takes care of the people that Pat was talking about in terms of, um, mom and pops. We could also say less than five units. Between four units or fewer.
You could have a, an owner that owns five small. And not occupied.
Mm-hmm. That's a good thing or bad thing?
I just think that it needs to cover. Not necessarily. It's not one way or the other.
I mean, I, I personally own one three family house on St. James Street that I do not live in and I would not make that purchase if there's law in place. But since I made the purchase, I took a zombie building and provided, which only was two family. I, I created a basement apartment, I provided extra housing where there was none. So I'm an example of someone who it's not my business, but I did a good thing for St. James Street and I did a good thing for me and my wife. Nothing wrong with that.
Nobody says there's something wrong with it. What we're talking about is how to protect tenants.
No, I know, but if you're saying that I have to, had to live there, I would never have done it. I'd be owner occupied.
And we'd have less housing in the city of Kingston. That's what I'm afraid of, afraid of guys just like you, girls just, just like that are gonna just say, I'm not doing this. You know, and then the opposite effect's gonna happen. I think we, I think Don's right. I think we should give, let's, let's be, let's give people a little leeway here and then the people who are really making a living off it, four units or more, let's, let's, let's make them accountable. But to put that kind of burden on a, a person who's, uh, just trying to make a little money, extra money for the family and trying to do the right thing for the community.
To take out owner occupied?
Yeah.
I'll make the change, but under protest.
I mean, it does create a loophole because then one person can own providing your unlimited amount of two family homes and they would be.
Three family.
Or two or under three.
As we want people to own three family homes.
Right, but if somebody can own an unlimited amount of two family homes, then this would be their business, but they wouldn't.
and this would be their business, but they wouldn't, they covered under this. True, I don't know how that happens. Because so much is your, that's your business. Each house has its own headache, so that's why that's unlikely, like you rather.
That's true. That is true.
Technically, yeah.
All right, so any other changes there? So the other three items there about applicability. B was accept premises for the possession, use, or occupancy of which is solely incident to employment, and such employment is being lawfully terminated. So that.
So that means if your job is housing you, and you lose your job.
What's that?
Yeah. Yeah, so company H owns a, a building with three units in it.
Yeah.
And they, they go out of business. So you don't, you, you would, you would have to move out of that house because, you know, you're not employed there anymore. Or if you're fired from that business, you'd have to move out of that, that unit.
But do they have a lease?
No, it's a company house.
Yeah, it's solely incident to employment. Sorry.
It wasn't, it wasn't. Because you work there.
Yeah, but they're on a lease.
Yeah.
Like a month to month.
So C, accept premises otherwise subject to regulation of rents or evictions pursuant to state or federal law, to the extent that such state or federal law requires good law, good cause for termination or non-renewal of such tenancies.
What does that mean? Just gotta follow state law? Right. State laws that are already in effect? Or not? Or not effective? Is that what that means, Randy?
Then you say.
Yeah, is that negator? Right.
Which one was that, Randy?
This is applicability, C. It's hard to, like, all housing accommodations except premises otherwise subject to regulation of rents or evictions pursuant to state or federal law, to the extent that such state or federal law requires good cause for termination or non-renewal of such tenancies.
Should need a lawyer for that one.
Yeah, so maybe we could strike that one for now if we want to.
It's not clear what that is.
Yeah.
Sounds like somebody's got to hold that.
So what, what do we want to do? Yeah. So maybe what we can do is we strike C and D, and then we do some research. If we want to do them, we put them on the floor. Does that sound good?
Yeah, Corporation Council.
Yeah.
So this is talking about subway, right? Renting the airport?
D.
D is?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we don't know what. Around 226 B, you're probably lost.
Right.
All right, so then that brings us back to the various other items that I introduced earlier on. Any change that anybody wants to make with any of those? I think I would just put law slash, I mean ordinance slash law while we get that checked on.
What are you looking at right now, Randy? Not the definitions, right?
No, these are the, the suggestions I had at the beginning, that I read out at the beginning.
Right. You start to sound like a lawyer.
Heaven forbid.
Nice and big now, thank you. Is this what he did? Is this under section 1, 2, 3, Randy?
Yes, so section one is what the title is. Section two is legislative findings tend purpose. In other words, clarifying why it is we're doing this so that future readers of the law will understand the context here.
Okay.
And then three, statement of authority is simply saying, you know, New York provides by home rule law, municipal home rule. So we're just clarifying that we're doing what we're allowed to do under state law.
So you're saying under state law, home rule, we can make up our own rules because we're home?
Yeah, so things like, for example, we actually have a lot of leeway in terms of different property laws. So our zoning code is completely different from Poughkeepsie's, which is completely different from Newburgh's, et cetera.
Okay.
And also our property taxes, very different from other municipalities, right? So that's all home rule law. That's, that's, we have the power to do these things.
So you're saying you can apply that to this?
Home rule law, yeah. That's why we're saying we have the power to do this as a municipality. So definitions, then, we should, and applicability, I would think we would put at the beginning.
Yeah.
So we would make those to section three. Or section four.
This is the first time I'm saying to people, you can't. Right? This is, this is more about like, they tax people, not having what they do with their own place.
All right, so then.
Yeah, that's where, that's where it's gonna be a problem. You're gonna continue to be a little personal. You're gonna continue to be a landlord?
Yes.
Yeah, because he's a good.
Sure he is.
All right, so then we would have the title. Section one is the title saying what this is called. Section two is the legislative findings, which demonstrates our concern over short rent increases and what that can mean for the general welfare in the city. Section three would be the statement of authority in which we note the powers we have under municipal home rule law. Section four becomes the definitions. Section five is the applicability, and we limited that to exceptions. Premises with less than four units. B, premises for the possession, use, or occupancy of which is solely incident to employment, and such employment is being lawfully terminated. Section six then becomes the, what we've looked at so far, the, you know, what's in the agenda for tonight. We would change within that one phrase from a disabled person to read instead a person with a disability. And then we would add section B, which is clarifying that nothing in here would serve to limit any tenant's rights that are allowed under state law. Section seven would be the severability clause, basically saying if any part of this is found to be invalid or unconstitutional, it only validates that specific part, not the entire piece of legislation. And then we've got two items that we would want to pass on to Corporation Council to get their opinion as to whether or not we include them.
So can we make a motion?
Have you lifted it, right?
Yeah, so I'd say the first thing would be a motion to, I think, a motion to accept all the changes. I think we can do that as. Yeah, so. I don't think so. So I'll pass this on to you to say, you know.
Council said that he, he could do it this way, right, Randy?
I think so. That was my understanding.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Did a, it's a question.
Well, never did come up.
No, she said, record.
Okay. All right. Well, so I move that we accept the changes developed here tonight in our Law and Books Committee.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second. Should we also say that with the two items that we need to send to?
No, because I think if we do want to add those, we'll do that as an amendment on the floor.
So a second.
So what are we voting on, Randy? The amendment?
On the changes.
And your changes?
So adding all the changes to the, to what we have on the agenda. So, hey, there's a motion by Randy, second by Rita, on the favor.
Aye.
Close. Okay, we do two passes, so we adopt the changes to the proposal. Okay, now what is the next step then?
And then we vote on the, if there's no more discussion, we vote on the whole schmear.
Okay, any, any discussion on the proposal as amended?
Can we ask, I'm sorry. Can we ask Barbara if we can take, you guys can take the vote, you know, without it being live stream? Because it was put on notice that it was cheap live stream. To make sure that everything.
Are we, are we sure that the live stream is, is still not working? I thought it was up at, at one point.
It was, according, the last text I got from D, I don't know, 7:30 said they.
Barbara, what, Barbara, what happened was somehow, I don't know what happened. Kyle tried to help me fix it. The alderman, which was listed as conference room two, became the host. But they don't have the authority to go on Zoom, and Kyle couldn't switch it from them being host to me being a host.
I, I see. I guess I have one other question, and maybe that's already answered, but are members of the public are able to enter the, the area where you are right now physically? Correct? So there are members of the public with access?
Yes, there. The website gives them a number to call.
And I think I saw some dial in earlier. I'm just trying to see if anyone was able to, it does sound like there has been public participation. Is that accurate through in-person and some version of remote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then I think.
Right, there were some people that called in earlier, and I admitted them, but then they must have left because.
Yeah, I saw some items. So it sounds like we all saw evidence of some in-person and some virtual participation, although, you know, perhaps less than we had hoped. So I think it's okay to proceed since the public has had an opportunity to, to be part, to, to see the proceedings tonight.
Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Answered the question, so. Where's the committee report?
Well, we have to, did we vote on the?
We didn't vote on the actual.
We voted on the amendments.
Yeah.
Now we need language for the committee report if we want to vote on that proposal.
Oh. I would. Oh, well, the common council, the docs. Local amendment to chapter 332 entitled rental properties of the code of the city of Kingston to prohibit evictions without good cause as attached.
Chapter.
332.
332?
Yeah.
The code.
Entitled rental properties of the code of the city of Kingston.
Yeah, perfect time.
To prohibit evictions without good. As attached.
To chapter 332 of the code entitled rental properties. It's a need to prohibit evictions without good cause as per attachment. And second, Scott Childress, on the favor. Close. Motion passes 32.
Also changing things, Randy.
I'm putting in here, make sure Pat is inspected by Building Safety every six months.
That's all we can. I got something. All right, Michelle. So that concludes our agenda. Any other business that we need to discuss? Okay, no other business. Is there a motion to return? Motion by Randy Scott Childress, third second. Second to Rita, on the favor. Okay, we are adjourned at 8:51 on December 17.
Thank you.
Thank you.